Good evening, everybody. Today is October 19th. It is 7:00 PM and this is a Moscow City Council Regular Meeting. Dan?
Would everybody rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free, democratic, and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I will start this evening's meeting off with reading several proclamations. The first one is Extra Mile Day proclamation. Whereas Moscow, Idaho is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. Whereas Moscow, Idaho is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving to themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Moscow, Idaho is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Moscow, Idaho acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2015. And now therefore, I, Bill Lambert, the Mayor of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2015 as Extra Mile Day in Moscow. And I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. The second proclamation I'm going to read is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior in intimate relationships used by one partner to exert power and gain control over the other. And whereas domestic violence can involve physical, sexual, emotional, economic, or psychology threats and actions. And whereas anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, gender, economic status, race, religion, sexual orientation, or education. And whereas statistics are sobering. Nationwide, one in four women will experience domestic violence sometime in her life. Over the past fiscal year, the nonprofit Alternatives to Violence of the Palouse provided 2,346 free, in-person advocacy-based counseling sessions, including 1,006 sessions for clients from Idaho. Domestic violence victims, advocates from ATVP answered 4,067 emergency hotline calls last year, including 1,673 from Idaho. Seventy-five of those victims and their children found safety in ATVP's emergency shelter for a total of 1,187 bed nights. And 35 of those victims and children were Idaho residents who needed 554 bed nights. And whereas, due to reduced funding and other resources, domestic violence programs are strained to keep up with the man's first services. And whereas growing up in a violent home can be a significant negative factor in children's development. And whereas Alternatives to Violence of the Palouse works with law enforcement and other local partners to provide help, including shelter to people in Leita and Whitman Counties who are affected by domestic violence. And whereas last year, ATVP provided 139 educational and regional outreach sessions to some 8,460 attendees. And whereas awareness of the problem is the first step, but it is incumbent on all of us to work together to prevent domestic violence, to respond to the needs of victims, to speak out, and to help ensure offenders are held accountable. Now therefore, I, Bill Lambert, the Mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim October 2015 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Moscow. And I urge all citizens to help end domestic violence. Is there anyone here from ATV? Would you please come up so I can give you this?
Thank you, Mayor Lambert, and members of the council. I'm Hayden Hensley. I work with Alternatives Violence of the Palouse. I'm a survivor's advocate here in the Moscow office. I just wanted to say thank you all for being here. Thanks for making this our priority in the community. We've all, as a community, in the past 35 years banded together and recognized that violence is neither private nor, as we've heard in the statistics, particularly rare. And in the past decade alone, so ATVP, we've been here for 35 years. In the past decade, we've worked with 3,600 individual clients. We've done, or provided 14,000 shelter nights, answered over 30,000 crisis hotline calls. And hopefully in 10 years, I won't be here. Hopefully in 10 years, we won't need me here at all, and we'll be out of business. That's the goal. And it won't happen without continued support and continued action, as Mayor Lambert said, and continued accountability for the offenders and their community that you all can do. Thank you for your commitment, and I look forward to working with you more in the future. Cheers.
Thank you very much for the, you know, ATVP has been around for many, many years. When I was on United Way Board back in the early 80s, why, they were one of the groups that United Way helped fund and still helps fund. And it's just one of those social ills that we have to, and we have to deal with it. And the only way to ever deal with something like that is to take it head-on and make sure that everybody knows that, hey, we don't have a tolerance for it, and we're going to fix it whatever it takes. So thank you for your work and your efforts in doing that. Okay, with that, I'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the Consent Agenda. Dan?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
One second. Okay, got a motion by Dan and a second by John to approve the consent agenda as is. I'll take the roll, starting with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, and we will move on to the next thing, which is Mayor's Appointments. Before the council tonight, I have five names. I have Aaron Stoddard for the Historic Preservation Commission, expiration 12/31/2017; Suzette Yanzenko, Human Rights Commission, expiration 12/31/2015; Erin Agidius, Human Rights Commission, also, 12/31/2015; Stephen Banks, Human Rights Commission, expiration 12/31/2017; and Jeremy Ritter, the Farmers Market Commission, expiration 12/31/2016, as a member-at-large. And I would entertain a motion from the council for approval.
I'd make a motion to approve the slate.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Dan and a second by Wayne to approve all five of these appointments. John, I'll start the roll.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay, and we will move on. Thank you very much. Any of you folks, if you'd like to stand up so we can recognize you, please. No, Jeremy's here. Anybody else besides Jeremy? Thank you very much. Jeremy, we appreciate it. One of the things about commission work, and sometimes, you know, I've had questions. People say, oh my God, you know, 12/31/2015 is the expiration. Well, and, you know, these, as these commissions, as folks come and go on commissions, they're taking spots where someone else is left off. And so what we do when somebody is willing to take this, we send them a letter, but we also explain that we look at appointing them for another term after that, so it's just not a two-month thing, which we appreciate. The volunteers that we have in Moscow and our commissions are absolutely terrific, and our city wouldn't function very well without them. So with that, thank you very much. Thank you, Jeremy, for being here. Okay, next I'll move on to public comment and Mayor's Response Time for 15 minutes. What this is, is anybody can get up in front of the council and speak, as long as it is not something that is in front of planning and zoning, or the Board of Adjustments, or on our agenda this evening. So when you come up, please state your name, your address, who you are, and tell us what you like.
Thank you, Mayor Lambert and members of City Council. My name is Max Cowan. I'm the ASUI president, so student government at the University of Idaho. I live at 416 West Fourth Street. I just wanted to come here to invite you all. We're having an event that we'd like to invite you all to attend. One of ASUI's goals is to strengthen our connection with the community, and we've been doing this event for a number of years. Obviously, I think you all would remember longer than I can. But this event, the goal of it is to provide an opportunity for student leaders to engage with members of our community, with leaders in our community, to learn from you all, to get to know you, so that we can hopefully work together better in the coming year. It's going to be November 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Pittman Center Ballroom, the International Ballroom. There will be food. Anyone is welcome to attend. I know that last year, we had about 60 people who came, and this year, we've invited a little bit larger group, more members from the city, as well as more student leaders. So we're having representatives from different student organizations, which encompass a number of different areas that I think are interesting to you all, as well as important to the functioning of our university. So thank you very much, and I hope to see you all there.
Max, and you said that was November 5th at the Pittman Center, is the ballroom?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
November 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 in the Pittman Center Ballroom, the International Ballroom.
That'll be great. That gives, like, one of the neat things with our council and with ASUI leadership is that's something that I'd like to see happen, Max, a couple of times a year, and we want to reciprocate that by next spring, inviting the leadership of ASUI up here with the council as well, so we can have a two-way street. So that's very important to all of us. Walter, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Mac, again, I think it happened last year as well. I'll be out of town that night, so I wish you well. Hope you have a good turnout, and maybe when the city hosts, I'll be in town for that one.
Fingers crossed.
Thank you for asking.
Other comments for Max before I turn them off? Thank you very much, Max.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next thing in order, is there anybody else that'd like to come up and address us?
David Pierce, 716 East F Street. A week ago, the editorial in the Moscow Pullman Daily News discussed an anti-party ordinance proposed in Eugene, Oregon. The ordinance would impose $1,000 fine if police were called to a residence more than once in a 90-day period. The paper thinks that that would be a good idea for Moscow and Pullman, and says, and I quote, "Some Moscow officials are looking at a similar Boise ordinance." In 2008, Moscow adopted a new noise ordinance. Fines are a possibility. However, since that ordinance was adopted, the number of noise complaints and the number of citations has dropped substantially. One of our current city council members said several years ago, when a report on the noise ordinance was given, that the current ordinance seems to be working. I would agree. I would urge the city to think very carefully before committing to such a draconian measure as the anti-party ordinance.
Thank you, David. That's the, really, the first of the, I've heard of any anti-party ordinance. Gary, do you know anything about that? You want to address? I mean, so, I don't know who from our city has said that, but the city supervisor and the mayor know nothing about it. But I will comment on the noise ordinance that we put in 2009, as on council at that time. And David, you're absolutely correct. The violations and the problems with it have just dropped. And the reason for it is because people know they need to behave themselves, or they will in fact get fined, because they don't have a 48-hour time period to get things fixed. And so it actually has worked pretty well. And when we actually did it, there was a little bit of an uproar about it for a while, but like a lot of other things, it just calmed right down, and it seems to be working fine. So thank you for your comments.
Mayor? I think I know the source of David's comment. The Campus Community Coalition has had presented to it a social host ordinance, which is probably what's being referred to. I didn't see the editorial in the paper, which surprises me. I think I thought I read all of those. But it's been presented as a concept for what I call the Alcohol Drug Task Force consideration and work. It's not actively being considered. It's out there, but I have some of the same concerns that have been voiced already about it, so.
All right. Do folks want to come up and make comment with this, this evening? Okay, with that, I will move on to the next thing, which is the Tree Commission Report by Tom Grenden. Tom, you have the podium, sir.
Excuse me. Tom Grenden, staff liaison to the Moscow Tree Commission. Thank you, Mayor Lambert, City Council members. At this point, I'd like to introduce Tree Commission Member Patrick Fecetti to make the annual presentation of the Tree Commission to the council. Patrick?
Mayor, council members, staff, and members of public. My name is Patrick Fecetti, and I've been a member of the Moscow Tree Commission for about a year now. And I'd like to thank you to give, thank you for the opportunity for us to present our annual report tonight. Just to reacquaint everybody with the Moscow Tree Commission, I'd like to read our mission statement. The mission or purpose of the Moscow Tree Commission is to plan, establish, and help conduct a comprehensive community forestry program for the city of Moscow. By ensuring safe, healthy trees, the community forestry program will enhance the quality of life for all that live, work, and visit the city of Moscow. To introduce ourselves, a few of our members are here, David and Mary Jo, along with Nils, Amanda, Don, and myself. Dan is our council liaison, and Tom is our staff liaison. The Moscow Tree Commission views Moscow's urban forestry, or urban forest as an infrastructure, specifically a green infrastructure. So we found this definition of infrastructure that I'd like to read. It's the physical components of interrelated systems providing commodities and services essential to enable, sustain, or enhance the societal living conditions. And we feel that this is very applicable to the urban forest. For example, the urban forest reduces energy demands that benefits homeowners. It also intercepts rainwater, which the city and the county receive benefit. And urban forests provide numerous ecosystems, services, that would not exist in a landscape of just concrete. What's kind of unique about this infrastructure is that the majority of the trees are actually owned by individuals within the community. So it's just not one entity that's responsible for this infrastructure. And we do our part to reach out to the community that has individual trees that are private property. So, but before I move on to discuss some of our activities that we perform to support this green infrastructure, I'd like to mention that a member of our commission recently passed away this last year. I think most of you probably knew Margaret Littlejohn. She was a very valuable asset to the community. She served on the Tree Commission for over 20 years and was involved in numerous other commissions and organizations throughout the community. The Tree Commission was involved in helping select a tree that the Pathways Commission planted in her honor. This tree is located along a trail near Mountain View Park, kind of at the end of F Street. Margaret will definitely be missed. The city of Moscow participates in the Tree USA program, which is primarily administered by the Arbor Day Foundation in association with the U.S. Forest Service and National Association of State Foresters. Moscow has been participating in Tree City USA for 22 consecutive years. There are 69 cities or communities in Idaho that participate in this program, and of those 69, only eight have been participating longer than the city of Moscow. So we take pride that the community realized early on the benefits that the trees provide. There are four requirements to be a Tree City USA participant. The first is the existence of a tree board, which is met by the Moscow Tree Commission and Tom's role with the city. Second, there is a tree care ordinance, which Moscow has. Third, a community forestry program. We believe we have a very strong enthusiastic forestry program here. And the fourth is we observe Arbor Day. So on Arbor Day, this last year was April 24th, and we celebrated Arbor Day by planting a tree along a B-1 street next to the library. We were assisted by the fifth graders from Russell Elementary. The students wrote poetry, they wrote stories, created other works of art, which they displayed at the celebration. And some of that work of art was also displayed at the Hamilton Indoor Recreation Center for all of the public to view. All of the students helped with the planting of the trees. However, I would like to point out, none of them helped dig the hole that the tree went into. So they were primarily hole fillers. But at the ceremony, we distributed tree seedlings to the students, and afterward at the farmer's market, we distributed the remaining seedlings to the public. And we distributed overall about 400 tree seedlings. So I mentioned the farmer's market. This is our primary form of outreach to the public. We participated at the market three times this year. We, there we distribute literature, we answer questions. All types of people come and stop and talk. You have those that are experts in trees, to the individual who recently moved to Moscow has purchased a home and is looking for advice on what type of trees to plant in their yard. One of our new programs this year was Fruit Tree Pruning Workshop, and this was a huge success. We had a full class of 20 participants. They learned about proper pruning techniques, and we discussed methods for training young fruit trees, as well as ways to try to get some of those larger, more neglected trees under control. And another new program that are new to us, I'd say, is we participated in the Leita County Historical Society Annual Ice Cream Social. There we presented results based on a computer program called iTree Design that we use to estimate the benefits that the trees on McConnell Mansion property provide, the property itself and the community at large. We had an activity for the kids called, where they could test their knowledge of good bugs versus bad bugs. And we also distributed tree cookies, which are slices of tree branches, and that was a surprisingly big hit with not just the children, but with also the adults. So moving on in the future, we have a lot of work in the pipeline, but just like to discuss or mention two of them here. We're currently planning for our second Fruit Tree Pruning Workshop that I believe is scheduled for February 20th, and we expect it to be full again this year. So if you're interested, encourage the public to register early. And also, the Tree Commission is working with P&amp;Z to update the planting requirements in new subdivisions, because we want to ensure that all of these available planting spaces are occupied, and doing so will further strengthen Moscow's green infrastructure. And with that, I would like to thank the council members for their ongoing support, and special thanks to Dan, our liaison, and Tom, the staff liaison. We could not do our job without you, and thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, for that wonderful report. And the Tree Commission's a very important commission in our town because of the forestry that we have here, and do a very nice job. Dan, you're the liaison.
Yeah, and, you know, that's, Patrick talked about the, you know, I think their most popular thing has turned into that pruning workshop. They're actually going to be holding it over at that WSU Turkey Orchard, I think, this winter, early spring, depending on how the weather looks, what we'll call it, but because there was, it was so popular, and they need more trees to work on and actually let people have some more hands-on experience. So that's something that they're really looking forward to.
Good. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Tom. And you, Walter?
Tom?
Yes, sir.
A question that the public is just waiting to hear answered. When do you prune fruit trees on the Palouse? What time of year?
Late winter to early spring.
You just told a lot of people what they needed to know.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we will move on to the next item, which is item number five, Solid Waste Franchise Agreement Extension and Amendment. Tim Davis will be doing the presentation. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As directed by City Council, staff has prepared necessary documents to extend the current solid waste franchise agreement with Leita Sanitation from September 30th, 2023 to September 30th, 2035. Your packets contain an amended Exhibit D, which is directly related to the curbside collection of recyclables. The amendments to Exhibit D consist of a description and responsibilities related to the new single-stream curbside recycling collection program in Section 2, titled "Type of Service." There's also a description of the roll card assignment responsibilities in Section 3, titled "Equipment," and the elimination of the former Section 12, titled "Curbside Collection Recycling Binns." Also in your packet is a second extension of an amendment to the 2003 Solid Waste Franchise Agreement. The amendment consists of language in Section 13, under Terms and Renewals, extending the term to expire September 30th, 2035. An ordinance has been prepared amending Exhibit D and extending and amending the term of the franchise agreement for introduction to City Council. Legal has advised that no action may be taken on these items until 30 days following this introduction to City Council. This was reviewed by Public Works and Finance Committee on October 12th, 2015. Council is being asked to consider the amendments to and second extension of the 2003 Solid Waste Franchise Agreement for adoption at the December 7th, 2015 City Council Meeting. And I apologize for the late handout tonight. There was a typo that got through before I got that fixed. Public Works and Finance had asked me to add the word "color" on the last paragraph on your second page. So again, I apologize for that. Questions?
Questions for Tim? Everybody's kind of clear. This is just putting us in front of us, and we'll be coming before as the franchise agreed by ordinance on December 7th, Council Meeting. This was discussed-
Question was that it would, that the word "color" was not in there in the original thing, and I'm glad to see it on the-
There it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Walter?
Mayor, or Gary, or Rod, do we need to take any formal action accepting or doing anything, or is just the presentation adequate?
Presentation's fine. You just need to direct staff to proceed with publication and bring it back at the expiration of 30 days.
If that would be appropriate. Mr. Mayor, I'd so move.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, Walter made a motion to move the adopted amendments forward to City Staff to review for the franchise agreement by ordinance that will come before us on December 7th, 2015. The second was by Dan. I will start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, so we'll move forward. Gary, do you need any other direction on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we chewed through our stuff pretty quick, folks, so now we're going to move on to reports. Dan, I'll start with you.
Well, for, as far as Administrative Committee, everything was on the agenda tonight. The big one, of course, is our renewal with WICOM for 911 services through December of 2020. Both Chief Duke and Chief Nickerson were in favor of moving that forward, so the committee felt that that was reason enough to move that forward. As far as other commissions, I missed the Arts Commission meeting this last week, and then the Tree Commission, of course, presented tonight, so that's all I've got.
Very good. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. On the evening of October 12th, I attended the fire, Volunteer Fire Department Board Meeting as liaison to that board. Pretty much standard business. They had a good turnout. They had a couple of presentations, education things, but pretty routine there. The other thing that I did this past two weeks was to attend the P-BAC meeting at 2:00 this past Thursday over in Pullman. They went over existing projects, brought some- brought some things up to date, had a presentation by a videophone from the consultant that's been selected to work on identifying water supply alternatives and consolidating and pulling together all the information that we have available to us on that. He will be at the meeting on the third Thursday of next month to actually present the scope of work and how that project is going to be proceeding. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Wayne?
Everything that we, was on the consent agenda was what was on Public Works and Finance. And we had a couple of reports. One was the continuation of the extension of the Brownfields Assessment Grant that Elise presented. The other one that was fairly interesting was the right-of-way vegetation trimming. It was a presentation by the street department. Steve Schulter presented that, and where they've been working in the southeast section of Moscow this year. It's been very successful. As you all remember, we said that if anything took longer than a half an hour, we were going to need to charge the residents where the work was being done. And they're pretty good at what they're doing, and they seem to be able to knock this all out in pretty good order. So everybody seemed to be pretty happy. They've done a good job of PR with the residents where they're doing setback. One of the things we talked about, too, was, that wasn't really clear at the time, was not only is it along the curb, but it's also along the sidewalk, on the inside edge of the sidewalk, not just in the green space. And that has to be kept back. As well as trees overhanging the sidewalk have to be eight feet high. Eight feet or 10 feet? Yeah, one or the other, anyway. But anyway, that was pretty good. Other than that, I don't have any other reports.
Okay. Jim?
Last Tuesday, I attended the Pathways Commission as liaison to that group. Resident Suviya Jed made a presentation about a plan to restore the Berman Creekside Park, and she's putting together a citizen group to work on that and come up with appropriate perennial plantings that will restore that and be easier to maintain with less, less chemistry. There was also a presentation by a student from the University of Idaho who's doing some work with the signage for the pathways that could dovetail with what Mr. McDonald's working with as far as the wayfinding signs for the paths that would tie the Greenway signage into the orphan paths and smaller paths around the city and notate which ones are the safest for kids, safest routes for kids to get to school. So that's what went on there. And that's all I have.
John?
Yeah, I've got a little on the planning and zoning, a little on the urban renewal. Planning and zoning had two things worth passing on. The public hearing amendment of Title 4, Chapter 5, regarding flood hazard areas and how they're going to change. And that passed and will be coming to the city council for us to finalize that process. And then we got the first introduction to the land use table changes so that they will be, hopefully in the future, easier to use, not only by the city, but by the people that need to use them as far as the builders and people of that ilk. And that was quite informative, but it's just in its infancy. It's going to take a while before they're able to get all the questions answered and put these in a table that will be easy enough for essentially anyone to read and to reduce the redundancy. And then the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency, about the biggest thing we did there was we accepted a bid for the Brownfield remediation project down on Sixth and Jackson. And that was given to Terographics and Strata, put together a project. And they came in at $45,835. And then there's a contingency of $9,167, which is essentially 20%. And then the Alturis District is closing at the end of the year, and it is moving along as it should be. And then we had a very interesting Legacy Crossing District discussion about what is going on in Legacy Crossing. And we've got quite a bit going on in Legacy Crossing, starting with Hospital putting up the building that they have started on. And then we've got Sangria is working to get going on their building, which is going to be on the corner of Sixth and Jackson. And that is also moving along as it should be. And it will be working in conjunction with the Brownfield remediation that's being done by, I believe, Germer Construction is doing that.
Question. Yeah. You have a question, Wayne?
John, pertaining to the developers for Sangria, one of the things we've talked about is realigning Sixth Street in that intersection. Is that realignment situation, does that get in the way of their developing that building, or they're-
No, it's not, it's not getting in the way. The thing, the problems, if there are problems, I really don't think there are, is got that power pole that has to be moved by Vista. And then Germer's got his crew out there, not only scraping away the contaminated soil, and contaminated not by pesticides, but by fertilizer. And then they also have to dig, I believe it's three test wells, to make sure that whatever water that comes onto that piece of property doesn't drain off into other areas. And so they're in the process of doing that.
And so that, if I may, that remediation of that Brownfield grant that we're utilizing for that, once that remediation of that property is taken care of, then Sangria's going to be able to move forward? Does that-
Yes.
Sound right?
Yep. They're getting more and more ready all the time. And then the last thing is that on the 17th of October, the Walk, the Talk, Finding the Center program was presented by the university and in conjunction with the city's Human Rights Committee. And it was an all-day process. And the keynote speaker was James Meredith, who most of us older people recognize the name James Meredith from back in the 60s. And well-attended and a worthwhile way to spend a day. Other than that, I have nothing.
Walter? John or Gary, the Sixth Street realignment of those lanes coming eastbound at Jackson, is that a done deal? Is that just yet, yet to happen, or is that still up for discussion and/or financing?
Talking about the turn lane?
Yeah, straighten the intersection out, Gary.
Not the Jimmy John's side, but the east, the eastbound Sixth Street.
The realignment, Gary.
Straighten it up.
And talking about eastbound turn lane, right turn onto Jackson. Yeah, engineering's working on the design, and it is included in this, in the FY 2016 budget for construction next year.
And it's not a ITD, "Mother, may I hang up?"
No, that's a city street.
Okay, thank you.
We're able to do that. Okay, I had several events. On October 1st, we had the Palouse Basin Water Summit that was held at Switzer Engineering's Event Center. And of course, all of us know in our area, alternative water sources is something that we're going to have to look at. But even more intriguing to me is the reuse and recycling of our own water that we can use. And that's going to be up for a big discussion. We're going to be moving forward with this in the years to come, because it's something that not only we have to address, it's something that's going to have to happen. And it's, I call it, it's like trying to eat an elephant at one time. It's something that's going to take a period of time. It's an ongoing process that we're going to have to work on to solve over this next 10, 15-year period. And so we're moving forward with that. But we had some good presentations at that. On October 7th, we had an airport board meeting. Interestingly, Mead and Hunt did a presentation there. And one of the things that we discovered was there's about a million, a little over a million QB guards of dirt that we'll not, that we thought we'd have to move. It's not going to be, have to move. It's going to be considerable savings for us on that. And that's one big cost savings, you know. Another thing is the Vista, we thought we'd have to have two different lines, a temporary line and then a permanent line on this runway realignment. And the Vista's came up with a solution so they can put one down and only have one down, so that it doesn't have to be redone. And the reason I'm bringing those two things up is that anytime we can save money by doing this, it's a big deal for all of us and all the partners that are in, working together to make this thing happen. And one of the things that every single time at a board meeting I have with Mead and Hunt, I make a big deal out of, if there's any kind of cost savings you can have, I want to know about it. And I want to keep working right on it. So they're pretty good about, so far, about doing those things for us. And so we're right on task with that, and I'm happy to report that.
That's good news, because usually when you get reports, it goes the other direction.
Well, and that's a saving, yep. And that's a savings of half a million bucks. It's a big deal for us. And so that's a, that's a pretty good thing, Jimmy.
Was, was there any knowledge about whether we're going to get the second grant before the end of the year on that from the FAA?
Right now, the, there's $16 million in grant monies that came, that are in the bank right now as we speak.
There was, there was talk about maybe double by the end of the year.
Well, they thought there may be some excess that the FAA had left over. And Gary and I, when we were back in Washington DC, met with the head of FAA, Eduardo Angelos, about that. And we discovered that there was no extra funds. Otherwise, we'd had a good shot at, but, well, Eduardo said to, told us both that, you know, if there was extra money there, they always have a tendency to give it to those people that come and see him. And we were one of the few that came and seen him, but there was none to give. So there you have it, Jim. So, but yeah.
Probably not. We're probably not going to see another, another dose this year.
Nope, not until 2016. But you know, the thing of it is, we keep pecking away at it and making it work, and just keep going after it. It's one of those ongoing things. It's going to be a four or five-year process for us. Let's see, October 14th, we had a regional breakfast at Banion's, and it was Pullman's turn. And they talked about the development in the corridor and tax sharing revenue between the city and the county. And I'm not quite exactly sure if it's all going to work, but they did a nice presentation and talked us about. So it was kind of an interesting thing with that. Gary may have more. He can add a light to it when I turn it over to him. But, and then on October 17th, as John said, we had the center of the conference at the university. And I gave a welcoming remarks that day for all the folks that were there. And as John had mentioned, James Meredith was the keynote speaker, which was, boy, first black person to go to Mississippi in 1962. And you know, this guy had a lot of courage and led a march and a bunch of different things in the 60s, got shot. And he was a true leader in the civil rights movement. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gary. Gary, you got some other things?
Thank you. Just to expound on the quarterly regional breakfast meeting, Pullman and, hosted by the city of Pullman, they had quite a few descriptions of what they're doing around the city, how the, they're cooperating with the late, or the Whitman County Commissioners to have revenue-sharing, tax-sharing situation where development of the corridor, should it ever occur, would be more of a joint venture that with the taxes that are used in the state of Washington can be levied by the city and the county, that if they can coordinate that, for instance, you can have sales tax in the county that aren't shared with the city, other way around when it's within the city. So these jurisdictions can tend to fight each other on annexations and things like that. So their discussion, great history of how the urban growth area around Pullman developed over the years, and how they were addressing those issues of development. But it was, I thought it was a very informative session.
Okay, that ends our regular meeting, folks. I would ente an adjournment to executive session per Idaho Code 74-206, 1C and 1F.
Consider yourself entertained.
Okay, so Dan motioned, Walter seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we will not reconvene this meeting once we adjourn the executive session.